That's on the second floor.
The theme is what our ethnic stands for and on this day, International Women's Day, with the theme of Stop the Bias, it's an opportunity to celebrate many contributions of women. It gives us a time to reflect, but it also gives us an opportunity to really start to take a look at all the work that still needs to be done. In the U.S., I don't know if you know this, but in the U.S., women still earn only about eighty-two cents on the dollar for every man, what a man earns. For women of color, Black and Latina women, that drops to about sixty-five cents for every dollar a man earns. What that means is that if you take the average men's salary in 2020, a white woman would have to work all the way to April of 2021, and Black and Latino women wouldn't have received parity until August and September respectively. So there's a lot of work to be done. Equity is so critically important, and what it does when we do have equitable and inclusive workplaces, it drives our sense of belonging, our engagement, and it fuels innovation. So for Power Women, our mission is to accelerate the development of women, to amplify the voices of women in our community, in City Hall, partner with leadership to ensure gender equity in our policies, our programs, and our practices, and to champion those issues in the community impacting women and girls. Thank you so much.
(Applause)
We're going to ask that our three older women don't go too far. As you work your way back down, older woman Garza, you'll be first. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Look forward to some great work. Tonight, we also are honored to present our Women of Influence and Excellence Awards. Awards given by our four older women to a woman in their respective ward or their network. Tonight's first recipient, and they're all amazing, three who are here with us, one who couldn't make it, but we will still definitely recognize her this evening. We'll ask after we do an introduction that the recipient comes down, and we'll have a presentation of the award by the Mayor Pro Tem and remarks by the individual older woman who nominated her. Our first recipient is a boss by any definition of the word. She owns multiple businesses here in Aurora, she serves on multiple boards, and gives back to our community in multiple ways. She was born in Durango City, is proud to call Aurora home. She studied fashion design at the Institute of Art Design Technology in Chicago, and she's the founder and designer of Claudia Oruetia Designs. She's the CEO and co-owner of La Quinta de los Reyes, where she gives back to the community in so many ways, including such community events as the Three Kings Celebration held each January, providing toys to thousands of Aurora children. She's a board member of the Aurora's Family Carriage Board, a board member of the Federation of Durango in Chicago and the Midwest, and a former board member right here of Aurora's Block Grant Committee. She personifies cuisine, class, and culture. Ladies and gentlemen, our first recipient tonight, recommended and nominated by Ward Two Older Woman, Wanda Garza, is Claudia Soto Oruetia.[343.12][343.12](Applause) As for the presentation of the plaque from the mayor, we can read the award, Mayor Pro Tem.
The mayor's Award of Influence and Excellence is honored to present it during Women's History Month to Claudia Soto Oruetia for leading with grace, grit, and gratitude, and for using your intellect, insight, and force to inspire excellence in others and throughout our community.
A round of applause. Claudia, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Apple. I'm going to bring my thing because I have to do everything that I want to say. I don't have much time, but thank you, other women, for donating me. Thank you. Mayor Richard Earl, enjoy receiving your award for the many opportunities I've gotten. I'm very honored to receive this award. When I first came to the U.S., I was eighteen years old. I came with two things in mind: learn and work. Work is a team. It takes people around to become who they want to be. As we celebrate women this month, I would like to share with you all, friends, family, everyone that's here, and especially those brave women that lead their country for safety and a better life. You know, I'm thinking that we want to thank those women out there, listen up, everyone. I'm a firm believer in helping others succeed in this. Thank you.
Good work, good presentation. Round of applause.
I have a little note in here. I can say, until today, like she's saying, until today, we still struggle to having the same opportunities like the men does, okay? And still, we're not in a good balance. Like minorities, like me, like Latina, we are still in disadvantage. African-American people, they're still there, but we have so many Afro-Latinas that are in the worst disadvantage, worst disadvantage. So we're still working a lot together to demand more opportunities for women, more, and more respect, and I demand also to respect us, respect and give us the opportunity. We prove we are the women's, we are the power, okay? As I say, the Latinas, the women here, we're in disadvantage, plus the Afro-Latinas, because African-American here in the United States of America have opportunities, but when they're Afro-Latinas, they're in total disadvantage. We still need to unite as women, we have the power, and to ask, to ask them to respect us, to give us opportunities, that we can do. We're so intelligent that we learn, as Claudia said, we came here to learn and to work. So please, give us the opportunity and respect us. That's all I can ask.
Round of applause for Claudia Oruetia. The next recipient, recommended by older woman Hart Burns. She couldn't be here with us tonight, but we certainly like to acknowledge Dr. Sharon Ali, an internal medicine specialist in Aurora. She graduated with honors in 1996. She had more than twenty-six years of diverse experiences, especially in internal medicine and working with women. She received her undergraduate degree at the University of Washington, her residency at Luther General Hospital, and her medical degree from the University of Illinois in Chicago. Her patients say that she is one of the most personable individuals that they've ever met in medicine in their entire lives, and we can give a round of applause to Dr. Sharon Ali. The older woman Hart Burns on the...
Dr. Sharon Olay is a woman of great stature, loving, kind, caring, a great listener. She is one that cares about what you care about. A lot of times, people hear you, but they don't care about you. She's a woman that has raised her wonderful children right here in Aurora, her wonderful husband. Together, they have produced greatness among themselves. But to be one of the African-American doctors here in Aurora, had to know all the things she's done, because during COVID, she still had to work it. During her sickness, she still had to work it. During her pain, she still had to work it. That's what women do. No matter what our titles may be, we know how to work it. We are women that care, and she is one that is caring. Because of who she is, I knew that Aurora has a great choice in knowing who she is. Their choice is because Dr. Sharon Olay is never second best, she's always number one. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Round of applause. Upper Hart Burns, Dr. Sharon Olay, and Dr. Claudia. At the time appropriate, we will present her award at her medical facility with the older woman. Our next recipient, coming from Ward Eight. She and her husband have been residents of Aurora since 1999. They have four children, Ian, twins Hannah and Quinn, and Will. Her inspiration for volunteering began with the March of Dimes Foundation in 2004 after the premature birth of her twins. The March of Dimes leads the fight for the health of all moms and babies through prematurity research, advocacy, maternal and pregnancy health education. In 2001, the Friedenberger twins, Hannah and Quinn, were born at just twenty-five weeks gestation, weighing less than two pounds each. The twins spent their first twelve weeks of life in the neonatal intensive care unit fighting for their lives. She and her husband created March for Babies, Team Tiny Feet, as a way to honor their children and raise vital funds for the March of Dimes. Listen to this. Since 2004, Team Tiny Feet has raised more than a half million dollars and has been the number-one family in DuPage County for the last seventeen years. I'd say more than a half million dollars, and the number-one team in DuPage County for seventeen years. She and her husband have served as board directors for the Chicago chapter of the March of Dimes since 2014, and since 2015, she has led her children in Team Tiny Feet in making non-sew fleece blankets that are donated to NICU at Rush Compton Memorial Hospital. Ladies and gentlemen, give a big round of applause for our next recipient of the Woman of Influence and Excellence Award, Carrie Friedenberger.
This mayor's Award of Excellence is honorably presented during Women's History Month to Carrie Friedenberger for leading with grace, grit, and gratitude, and for using your intellect, insight, and influence to inspire excellence in others and throughout our community. Congratulations, thank you so much.
The older woman, please, the older woman, Chris.
This is a tough one. I started to sit down and write some words, and I just couldn't. This comes from the heart. I don't know how long I've known Carrie, but I know that we have had similar journeys, and there's nothing more fierce than a mama bear taking care or protecting their child than a mama bear who's giving birth to children in need. When that happens, it turns your life upside down, and you spend the rest of your life trying to turn it right side up, so that your children have the best that they can possibly get. When Carrie and Kirk gave birth to their children twenty-one years ago, because they just turned twenty-one, Quinn, Quinn, we're in wave, Quinn, Quinn is one of the twins up here. They took their babies, well, first of all, they couldn't take their babies home. They had to stay in the hospital for, what, twelve weeks afterwards. When they were born, they were less than two pounds. They couldn't even touch them because of the stimulations. They couldn't even put their hands in the incubator to touch them. But once these guys took their babies home, they didn't stop. They acknowledged that the March of Dimes is what got them through, what they needed to get through, which gave them the courage, gave them the resources, gave them the research that they needed for their babies to survive. So these guys took on a whole new mission, and they started, they gave birth to what is called Team Tiny Feet. And what's so interesting about that, I mean, the wonderful things that they've done in raising their own children, but what makes it even more wonderful is they've raised a half million dollars, so that other families can experience what they've experienced, so that other families can take their babies home, because it doesn't always happen in these situations. Premature births are number-one deaths with complications for infants, so it's a very sad situation for families to go through that. But the one thing that made me pick Carrie for this, not all of the wonderful things we've just heard about her, but what picked, what made me pick Carrie for this, is that she, girls are twenty-one years old, she's still tirelessly, each and every day, fundraises, gets out, public awareness, and doesn't stop. She wants other people to have the wonderful experience that they were able to have to get their family through that. And Team Tiny Feet started as the Friedenberger family. Carrie has turned it into a community project with over a hundred community members that are part of that, that are part of her mission. And when she gets together, and when she wants to do a function, and everybody's there, and you see it all over the place, you'll see that, you'll see Team Tiny Feet, everybody in their purple shirts, out walking, out doing the things that they need to do, that Carrie would like for them to do. They get together, they make quilts for babies, all kinds of fun things. So the world is a better place because of Carrie Friedenberger. The world is a better place because of the Friedenberger family. You guys have given life to babies who may have lost their life. So there was no doubt in my mind who was going to be my nominee. Congratulations.
I'm honored, woman Patty Smith, for recommending me for this award. I'm truly honored. I don't do any of this for the accolades, I do it for the families that just want to bring a baby home. I know more moms than I care to know that have lost their babies and didn't have the happy-ending story that my husband and I did by being able to bring our babies home. I also want to thank my husband and my four children for getting behind every crazy idea I have as another way to raise money for the March of Dimes Foundation. They are the leading foundation in trying to find the cause and cure for premature birth. We do advocacy work at the local and national level, trying to get bills in place to continue funding for the health of all moms and all babies, and our latest mission is health equity. We know that fifty percent of Black women deliver prematurely, most of the time for unknown causes. Latino women are thirty percent more likely to deliver prematurely. There should not be that disparity in the United States of America. In the country that we live in, and the resources we have, all women should have the same benefits of healthcare, regardless of their skin color. So I'm honored to be given this award, I'm grateful for it, and I will not stop until every mom and every baby is born healthy. Thank you.
Round of applause. The first mayor's Award of Influence and Excellence. Another round of applause as Carrie makes her way through. Amazing work. The recipient this evening, recommended, Ward Ten older woman Schweta Bae. She says she's a rainbow warrior who practices intentional creativity in Ward Ten. She taught art in public school to elementary children, encouraging them to use reading, math, and science skills in their creation, merging A into steam. She continued teaching art at a private school, and later helped as a volunteer aide in a ceramic class at College of DuPage, where she had the opportunity to be a founding member of Clay Space, a not-for-profit group in DuPage County that promotes ceramic art. When she retired in 2015 from her "real" job, as she puts in quotes, she decided to go full-time into her creative life, volunteering at a number of local art leagues. During this time, she became interested in healing modalities and meditation, to soothe things in her life and others. She's learned quite a bit about the connection of art and the spirit. Her philosophy now is to spread joy and harmony, to allow women to open to their full possibilities. While she continues to work and create her art locally, at some point, she looks forward to opening a studio, hopefully right here in Aurora, where she can offer art classes to uplift women. Ladies and gentlemen, please give a round of applause to Kathy Sizal. According to Mayor Pro Tem, followed by older woman Bae.
So this mayor's Award of Influence Excellence is honorably presented during Women's History Month to Kathy Sizal for leading with grace, grit, and gratitude, and for using your intellect, insight, and influence to inspire excellence in others and throughout our community. Congratulations.
Good evening, everyone. Happy Women's Day. All the powerful women here. I want to say thank you to all the women who have helped me through different phases of my life. Great power that women have to bear a child, to raise family, to handle husband, handle boyfriend, people at work. So just want to say thank you to all the women who've been there for me. I have nominated Kathy here for this award. She's a silent worker in the community. She's an artist. She believes in sciences, and we have mutual three major things: art, science, and the love for City of Aurora. Because she's been a proud resident of City of Aurora for the last forty years, tenth ward resident, and she's been a great volunteer in the community. She's been a quiet volunteer who has not seeked awards for her volunteerism, which is the great thing I liked about her. She's been part of DuPage Art League, and soon she'll be part of Aurora Art League as well, and we should support women who want to do creative things in the community. Thank you.
I would like to thank Alden Bae for giving me this award and nominating me, and I would like to thank the City of Aurora for having this opportunity to celebrate women. I am a great proponent of pushing women, not necessarily dissing men, but pushing women, okay? Because we need that power. I wear proudly a red string around my arm here, because that represents the red thread that connects all women across the whole world. I have, I belong to a couple of organizations online, and I have friends all over the world that I connect to, and we connect through this red thread, because it represents us. So I wanted to give you that story there, I thought that was very important, especially with our Power Women. I should come over with my red thread and tie it under each one of you. But I am really honored to get this award. Thank you so much.
Round of applause for Kathy Sizal. Step forward, take a photo. Thank you for all of our nominees and honorees tonight. Keep the applause going for Claudia Sutia Soto Oruetia. Keep the applause going for Carrie Friedenberger, Dr. Sharon Olay. Thank you all for being the voices of Women's Influence and Excellence here in the city of Aurora, not just during Women's History Month, but all throughout the year. And then lastly, ladies and gentlemen, another round of applause for our women leaders of the Aurora City Council. Ward Two older woman Wanda Garza, Ward Seven older woman Shakina Hart Burns, Ward Eight older woman Patty Smith, and Ward Ten older woman Schweta Bae. Thank you for your leadership and for helping us to break the bias. Happy Women's History Month, and Happy International Day of the Woman. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem.
And during civil unrest. This helps us and puts the city in a preeminent position to retain these outstanding officers. It puts us in a position to reward these officers for their hard work, their dedication, their commitment to their community, and to high-quality law enforcement in Aurora. You all have heard Alicia and myself and others anecdotally talking about how difficult it is to hire positions in general for the city right now. It's an epidemic across many industries, but when law enforcement is involved, we are seeing very difficult times to recruit. And so the city decided, with the leadership of our bargaining team, the mayor, the leadership of Apple, to finally get down and collaborate and realize that we had to get these four Rs. done. And so we are, I believe, in an outstanding position going forward, based on the financial elements, based on the benefits here, to recruit officers at a very high level and make Aurora the premier destination. And we took a hard look at the end of this, after two and a half-plus years, at the changed circumstances. And those changed circumstances demanded we put past animosities aside, past differences of opinion, and do what's best for our community, for the city, for the officers, for the union. And so we collaborated. We sat down, we worked through it, we looked at our comparable communities, and how we can position ourselves together to be number one. And so I'm proud to say, Alicia and our attorney John Murphy, the chief, the deputy chief, the whole command staff that participated, and a shout-out also to new president Matt Huber and his team, and attorney Tim O'Neil for coming to the table in earnest, in good faith, and getting this done. And I think we should all be very, very proud of this agreement, and this is something that will affect us all the way through 2024 and set a baseline for others to follow. It was the right thing to do, and these four Rs. are how we're going to operate going forward for our public safety, because we all talked about this during the pandemic. We were not going to turn a public health crisis into a public safety situation as well. And so you all, with your help, you help prioritize police and fire, and that's what this contract continues to do. So I want to thank the officers that are here. Please... Please relay back to the troops our thanks, and I want to turn it over to Alicia for any detailed comments you may have. Thank you.
Alex, and he's pretty much said it all, but I did want to add because I've been there from the beginning, this contract expired 2019. So we have been at the table back and forth since that time, and it was a hard, hard process. But I'm very proud of what we've been able to deliver together, both the city and Apple. You will see in this contract that we recognize the hazards that our officers are put in front of every day with a one-time incentive for hazard pay. This contract recognizes the tough times that we have in terms of recruiting and retaining officers, and so we have some incentive there to let our veteran officers know that, you know, we appreciate them, we want them to stay around. You will see both of those things in that contract, as well as moving from a pre-hired lateral process to a lateral program within our contract, again, to entice a veteran and qualified officers to come join our team. So it took a while for us to get here. There was times that we were almost done, but both sides stuck through it, and we delivered, I think, a really solid contract. This is a five-year contract, so we don't have to get together so soon. Normally, our contracts are three to four years, but this one is a five-year contract. And I think it's a fair contract, and with everything that's going on, I'm very proud. So I thank the council for approving it, and I also thank John Murphy, who's, he was our attorney. He did a great job, as well as the officers that were at the table. It was a very good experience, so thank you.
We had a motion by Alderwoman Hart Burns, and I believe a second by Alderwoman Garza. Are there any other questions or comments from the council?
Yeah, Pro Tem. Thank you. I have to say, the mind of a song, always the mind of songs, right? It's been a long time coming, but I'm glad to say that change has come, and this time women can say that it's done. I want to thank retired investigative women for all the hard work that you've done, even in helping and just being there along with Sergeant Lee, activities. I mean, these two leaders worked hard and tirelessly for years to make sure we can get to this point on today. But I'm also grateful for Matt. I'm also grateful for Officer Salomon. I'm also grateful for all those as part of Apple, officers, the union, each place that you are. And then Tim, you too, you just did what you need to do. I think you all have been there, that group that learned how to work it and work it out. It might just suck a cold, bittersweet, but this is your farewell, but it's happening tonight. Tonight, this means says retire on, live on, live well. All the hard work that you've done with Apple, I would never forget. I remember Apple stopping cars and giving them gift cards for Christmas. I remember Apple having a problem going to a mother's home and set it up for the babies. I remember Apple being there in the community to even help me, even at the festival, even putting shoes on the kids' feet, even buying clothes for the kids. I remember Apple doing it. You all are men and women that know how to get the job. I am proud that you have come to a conclusion and come to an agreement with this contract. I'm thankful to Mayor Allen, Alex, and Alicia, all y'all, thank you. But I remind you, Sam Cooke says, I'm so glad that a change has come, and we are grateful to see the fine work that this great union is going to continue to do, and want to continue to make sure that you all stay next to them. You all stay next to them. The work may be hard, but the harder you work, the better it's going to be. And together, we all get it done together. But again, as Sam Cooke said, it's been hard with him, but guess what? He knew that change is going to come. And on tonight, I am grateful to say this change has come. Thank you so much.
Are there any other questions or comments from the council? Carrie Nunn, please, would you please call the roll?
Alderwoman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Masia?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dina?
Yes.
Alderwoman Franco?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zeb?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hart Burns?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Buck?
Yes.
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Jenkins?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Thank you very much. And before we go on, I know Alderwoman Hart Burns made some comments. I've been part of these negotiations in the past with the union. Three years of contract negotiations, a very complex process, so it's very hard. There's a lot of work involved. I don't know if people really understand that, but I do want to thank the staff, the mayor's office, the police union, John Murphy, HR department in particular, because this is a very significant thing, and actually, I think it's worth a round of applause because everybody came together. Thank you so much. Now we'll move on to the Treasurers Report, 220191, Treasury Report for January 2022. And I acknowledge receipt of the January 2022 Treasurers Report. Does staff have a presentation?
Just a few brief remarks, Ms. Mayor Pro Tem. And closing the packet tonight was the Treasurers Report as of January 31st. Excuse me. January represents the beginning of a new fiscal year. It's hard to tell any trends or any real patterns, but initially, we are off to a good start, at least with the results we experienced through that 31-day period. Please remember, when you look at these numbers, you have to take them with a little bit of a grain of salt. We haven't received any real estate tax revenues or distributions from any of the counties yet, so there are none of those revenues reflected in the statement. And additionally, many of the revenues that we do receive in January actually relate back to the prior year's activity, in this case, 2021's activity, and they aren't reflected in the 2022 revenue numbers as of yet. They will actually be booked into 2021 as part of our accrual and annual audit process as we move forward. So when you look at the general fund, we did have a slight surplus posted. We had $7.1 million in revenues, approximately $6.45 million in expenditures, resulting in a $680,000 surplus for the general fund as of January 31st. Revenues to date, and notable revenues right now, revenues are trending at about 3% of the annual budget, again, owing to those comments that I made related to how the revenues get booked as we move through the audit process. But of particular note, we did receive a substantial building permit, so the licenses and permits category of revenues was much higher than expected and anticipated during January. Additionally, we continue to see very strong performance in our income tax line item that's distributed back to us through the state of Illinois. Expenditures are also trending at about 3% of budget. All departments are essentially lower than or equal to budget at this point, so there are no concerns in that area. In regard to the rest of the numbers, there was nothing really exceptional. Again, it's one month, it's hard to tell a trend. We'll keep an eye on those as we move forward, but so far, so good. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone may have.
Any questions for Mr. Minif? Thank you, appreciate it. We'll move on to the bills.
Ward 2, yeah, Bill.
220188, bill summary, large bill list. We have a motion to accept the bills by Alderwoman Hart Burns, second by Alderwoman Garza. Are there any questions, discussions on the bills? Carrie Nunn, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Yamas?
Yes.
Alderwoman Garza?
Yes.
Alderwoman Masia?
Yes.
Alderwoman Dina?
Yes.
Alderwoman Franco?
Yes.
Alderwoman Zeb?
Yes.
Alderwoman Hart Burns?
Yes.
Alderwoman Smith?
Yes.
Alderwoman Buck?
Alderwoman Bade?
Yes.
Alderwoman Morgan?
Yes.
Alderwoman Jenkins?
Yes.
11 yes, 0 no.
Motion carries the bills are approved. There is no need for a closed session. We have a motion, we have a motion by Alderwoman Hart Burns, second by Alderwoman Jordan. Alderwoman, sorry, Alderwoman Smith.